The staff and elected officials, the city council will be video conferencing our meetings on April 20th and next week, April 27. You know what we've seen happening in our state is an alarming increase in the number of COVID cases, and it is of deep concern to us, not only to us, but to so many in our community and states. The governor and our mayor has mentioned that these next two weeks are essentially critical for us. We have to do our part, we must do everything we can, however big, however small, to flatten that curve. And that is why we will be video conferencing our city council meetings based on the recommended advice of our health director and absolutely doing the right thing. For those who are wanting to peer in, you can go on www.youtube.com/lnktvcity or on Facebook I can say that, you know, this is, this is not business as usual for us because it's not life as usual for any of us. You know, we were elected to serve our neighborhoods, our communities, and our city. We were elected to make very tough and clear-minded decisions in the regular course of business. Our constituents especially rely and trust us to most importantly, do our jobs, show up, and protect the people that are most vulnerable in our community, and most importantly, to make decisions in times of emergencies. This is one of them. As you know, the reason why we are moving forward with video conferencing is because our federal government, our states, and our county and our city have all declared a state of emergency. The governor by his executive order number 220-03 has authorized a limited waiver during this declaration of emergency that permits all public bodies in the state to meet by video conferencing, telephone conference call, and other telecommunication applications so long as access to the meeting is provided to the members of the public and the media. Each of my colleagues that is joining us today is video conferencing, with video conferencing has a copy of the Open Meetings Act with them. I have mine right here, and I know for the, the public that is going to be speaking to us today, we have, as always, the Open Meeting Act posted at the, the back of the chamber. Also, you know, because we have invited the public to participate, we have put in additional safeguards for their protection as well. And for those individuals that will be testifying, they will be doing so from the Luxford Studio, which is adjacent to the city council chambers. And we ask that they stay there and wait until their item of business is called. We ask that you approach the podium with the laptop and provide your testimony at the appropriate time when your item is called. As always, you only have five minutes to make your comments, and then, once you are done with your comments, that we ask that you exit the chamber immediately. It's going to be on your left. The one thing I want to say is, you know, we need to get to work. We have to get to work. We have to do our jobs to protect those in our communities, but to make sure that we can have business as usual, no matter, even if it's under unusual circumstances. We want to make sure the developments go forward, the construction wherever and whenever possible can be functioning. We need the revenue in our city and in our county and in our state, so that is no surprise. I wanted to reach out to my colleagues first before we stand and, and say the Pledge of Allegiance, if they had any comments that they would like to make at this time. James, I'll go ahead and recognize you.
Thank you. Northeast Lincoln did not elect me to abdicate my post in the middle of a crisis, and they did not elect me to shut down a branch of government. One of the reasons they did elect me was to keep our neighborhood safe and to fight for them. Meeting virtually allows us to protect public safety and to continue to work in the service of people of Lincoln. Northeast Lincoln worked to elevate me to this position, and I owe it to Northeast Lincoln to make sure that they always have a seat at the table and that their voice is heard. As we go through an unprecedented time, I am so thankful that we have the tools available and the support behind us to continue getting things done for our city in a way that does not risk other people's lives. As we know from our briefings, it can take days before we start showing symptoms and still be contagious. Taking unnecessary risks is not what our healthcare workers, our first responders, our families and our seniors need right now, and to take unnecessary risks is not in the best interest of our city. So, thank you for allowing us to meet virtually. It's the right decision.
Thank you very much, James. I didn't know if Sandra or Tammy, you wanted to make some comments at this time, or you can always make them throughout the meeting. Okay, so, let's get to work. Let's do our jobs as elected officials by doing our part to protect the public, our staff, and our families. I asked my colleagues if you could please just mute your microphones as we're gonna stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you notice, in Sandra, don't block the flag. In Sandra's office and her screen, we have the flag. So, everybody, let's please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, let's have a moment of silent meditation. Okay, let's get business underway. In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber, and my colleagues who are joining us today also have that copy of the Open Meetings Act with them. The Order of the Business of the City Council is as follows. A clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads an item. The applicant and then those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. And for those individuals that will be testifying, we do ask that when you come in to provide your testimony, that you approach the podium and be sure and write your name legibly in on the sign-in sheet. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. Normally, on the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, not on the agenda for that date, nor planned for a future agenda, but because of the state of emergency and for the protection of the public, we ask that you email your concerns to councilpacket@lincoln NE.gov. That's councilpacket@lincoln NE.gov. And Teresa, could you please call the first item of business?
Certainly. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three.
Okay, is there anyone in the Luxford Studio that wanted to testify on any of these items? If you could come inside the chamber and, and step up to the, the podium with the laptop. We'll just give a couple of minutes if we see any activity or movements. Okay, someone is coming forward. Okay, thank you, David. So, I think we can move on.
All right, then, item 1A was introduced by Ward.
So moved. Introduced by, introduced by Ward and seconded by Washington. Is there any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero. All right, next then, would be our public hearing resolutions. I'll call items for A, approval of amendment number two to the conditional annexation agreement for East A Street Coalition between the city, Heritage Lakes LLC, BCLINC LLC, BNJ Partnership, David David John LLC, Christopher A Kidwell, Homestead Acres Incorporated, and East O Realty Company to reflect changes in the scope and financial obligations of the parties related to the road improvements to be constructed on A Street between approximately 89th Street and 94th Street.
Okay, is there anyone in the chamber? I see David Carey.
Actually, this is Tom Houston. I'm in front of you today, and I thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you today. It is unusual, I have to admit, but I understand with today's environment, we have to do what we can to try to move business forward. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln, appearing on behalf of the seven members of the coalition that comprise the East A Street Coalition. Collectively, they own about 200 acres located on the north and south sides of A Street from approximately 89th Street all the way to 98th Street. Just to remind you, the city council originally approved the conditional annexation agreement back in November of 2018, approved the annexation, approved the change of zone of the property, approved the sanitary sewer service, and also approves certain street improvements to A Street. Then, in October of 2019, the annexation agreement was amended to provide for a different plan for the sanitary sewer service, removed the temporary lift station, and allowed the construction of a trunk line connecting to the Stevens Creek Main Line, which construction was actually underway at this point. The item on your agenda today is, I don't have all signatures of the seven members of the coalition, so I am going to request that you defer voting for two weeks until you reconvene again as a public body. Just to give you a little, the high points of the street improvement amendment, amendment number two, deals solely with the street improvements in A Street, and it calls for a roundabout at 89th Street that is really associated with the White Horse Development. It also calls for a roundabout at 93rd and A Street that is directly related to the East A Street Coalition, and then a connections, connecting section of street between 89th Street and 93rd Street. It was anticipated that the total project cost was going to be approximately $3 million. With the engineer's estimate for the cost of the street improvements excluding design was a little over $2.5 million. We now have an actual bid back, which is actually $2,469,000, so it's under the projected cost, but design, even including design, will be under the entire estimate of cost of $3 million. The cost of the improvements is to be really funded with two different mechanisms, one of which is the arterial street directed impact fees for $800,000 and sales tax funding for 2.2 million over really a three-year time period as, as the sales tax would be collected. As I mentioned, I don't have all the signatures, so I would ask you to delay the vote for two weeks, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have of the amendment number two at this point.
Are there any questions of Mr. Houston at this time? Tom, I do have a couple of questions for you. Thank you for kind of giving us the history of these, of this project, and it sounds like almost every element of the annexation and elements that impact this project, we have already approved them in, in previous sessions. You know, I'm, I'm looking at the breakout of some of the impact fees that, we know that the cost of this project is expensive, clearly, and we're making a commitment today to set aside some of the impact fees in future years to help reimburse the developer. So, is that normal and customary, and in light of some of the financial issues that we see looming on the horizon, how does that impact, how does it involve the impact fees commitments that we're going to be making and voting on in a couple of weeks?
Very good question. Ideally, we would have development that precedes all the arterial street impact facilities, and that's not always possible. What we're, the, the coalition is being asked to do is actually go borrow the money from a lender and lend that money to the city, and then, as homes are being constructed within this area and paying the impact fees, at billing permit stage, the impact fees collected would then be captured by the city and repaid to the developers for those impact fee facilities over that could be one to seven-year time sequence. So, the developer goes, borrows the money and lends it to the city pursuant to the amendment in front of you.
So, then, the impact fees, does it also include us reimbursing them for the interest?
No.
No? Okay. Because it's not part of the deal. And I know that we had a couple of questions of David Carey, who was explaining, you know, we're also going to be using some of the quarter cent sales tax funds to help bridge the gap in the cost of this project. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Was that a question of me or David Carey?
I think, well, I think if you can answer that, that would be great, or if David Carey needs to step up, that's okay, too.
I can tell you this much, the, what has been negotiated of the entirety of the project cost of $3 million, we anticipated 2.2 million would come from the city over a three-year period, with approximately 1.4 would be funded in September, approximately September of 2020. And, and then, an additional $800,000 would be, really, the developers would, the, the coalition members would again go to their lender and obtain a loan for $800,000, loan that, those funds to the city, that would be repaid over two more additional fiscal years, the 2021 days, 2022 cycle. And it is based upon the projections. Of course, the sales tax projection in the near term obviously are not what were to be expected. From what I understand, the first quarter, really the fourth quarter of 2019, sales tax collections were ahead of projections. I think they'll obviously be below for the near term, but I think we have to remind ourselves that the sales tax authorized by the voters is over a six-year time period, and that eventually, we believe the economy will recover and will be turned loose, at which time sales tax, we believe, will continue to be generated to fund the public infrastructure approved by voters.
Sandra, did you have a question?
I don't have a question. I appreciate the explanation, though. I was thinking about that myself as I looked forward, looked ahead to sales tax revenue.
And then, are there any other questions for Tom? I was hoping, Tom, if you might, you know, just step aside and David Carey comes in the room to, to talk a little about, about how the fundings from the quarter cent sales tax were approved for these projects.
Certainly. David Carey with the planning department. So, the, the project that's before you and the other project that's on this agenda today, they went through a process of working with the, the ACT group that was put together to help coordinate and determine how to spend the money that's coming from Lincoln on the Move, one quarter cent sales tax that was approved by the voters last year. So, this project and others that have come before you were discussed by that group. Staff assisted in explaining that this, these projects were appropriate for the use of those, that funding. And then, we went through a process to establish which projects could and should go first, and it really was based on kind of a readiness factor, and the project that's before you right now does meet that standard, and so, we, we are here in support of moving forward with the agreement as put before you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for David at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, David. Are, is there anyone else in the chamber in the Luxford Studio, excuse me, studio that would want, would like to testify on this item?
There is no one else here to testify.
Okay, and I didn't think anybody had any other questions for Mr. Houston. Okay, I think we could go on to the next item.
All right, we'll go on to item 4B, approving, approval of amendment number four to the Waterford Estates Conditional Annexation and Zoning Agreement between the city, Waterford Estates LLC, Ridge Development Company, Southview, Inc., Developments Unlimited, LLP, and Northern Lights, LLC, related to construction and funding of a roundabout at the intersection of North 104th Street and Holdridge Street.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Danae Calkowski, I'm appearing today on behalf of Waterford Estates. The amendment before you to the annexation agreement for Waterford Estates really just addresses one item, and that's the intersection at 104th and Holdridge Street. I'm going to try and work with the map here. So, I've got an X on the intersection that we're talking about right up here. So, the Waterford Development basically goes all the way from O Street to Holdridge, and the 98th Street runs right down through the middle of the development. Holdridge is an asphalt rural section roadway. In the original annexation agreement, it was contemplated that the developer would construct temporary right and left turn lanes at 104th Street. I think as staff and the developer got to visiting about here and the importance of this intersection, it serves basically the future LPS school site. That one got approved by the recent bond issue, and so, anticipated to have the school site there in fall of 2022. It also serves, obviously, the Waterford Development and then the Dominion South, or Dominion at Stevens Creek Development over to the east. So, there's a lot of traffic and a lot of importance that's going to be, people that are going to be utilizing that intersection. And so, there was some discussion about whether there was an opportunity that instead of building temporary turn lanes that would just get removed in the future to look at constructing more of a permanent roundabout at this intersection. And so, through the discussions with staff and developer, I think we agreed that that made good sense in this location. The, the funding will is, well, the, the cost is anticipated to be about $1.1 million. We're looking at utilizing impact fees that have already been collected from this development. There's about 500,000 plus of impact fees that have been collected that can go toward the improvements at this intersection. Also, then anticipating utilizing $400,000 of Lincoln on the Move funds. That'd be $200,000 in year, I think it's '21, '22, and $200,000 in '22, '23. And then, there's still a small gap, and that's anticipated to be funded by the developer upfront, and then, they'd be repaid back those dollars with impact fees that are collected from future development out here. Waterford still has some additional residential development that'll be occurring down here. We also have two commercial sites, so there's an opportunity for additional impact fees to be generated. Anticipated construction of the roadway would be probably designed sometime toward the end of summer or fall of 2021, with construction over the winter and into the spring of 2022, so that that intersection would be up and running in time for the opening of the school in the fall of 2022. I think I'd be happy to answer any questions. This one made sense, I think, for the group to utilize Lincoln on the Move funds because we've got not only contribution of developer working with the city, and so, we've got all parties kind of jointly trying to work to get a permanent improvement in here that'll serve the community for a longer period of time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Danae? I don't see any hands go up. Danae, I do have a question for you. This is just really an amendment that involves the, the construction of that roundabout, because Waterford is pretty established at this point, and we've approved the annexation and other agreements that involve this project. Is that correct?
Yes, Waterford's been going on for probably over 10 to 15 years out here. In the original annexation agreement, we provided for, you know, construction of the sewer. There was a pump station utilized out here at the beginning, so sewer has, gravity sewer's now been built down to, to the site. The original annexation agreement dealt with construction of the improvements for 91st Street. Those are all completed and paid for. So, at this stage, there are no outstanding improvements that need to, Waterford needs to be reimbursed for. They've all been constructed and built. So, that's what makes the ability to utilize some of those impact fees collected for this intersection.
Thank you very much. Is there any other questions of Danae? Thank you very, oh, Sandra, yes.
I do, thank you very much, Councilwoman, Chair. Danae, I am reading through the amendment. It looks like the developer has very nicely agreed to use the city contracting process and, and picked that up and, and, which I appreciate, but I'm curious about the design. So, instead of city design or contracted designer, it looks like the developer has agreed, or the city has agreed to use the developer's designer. Is that usual, or is that something new being done on this project?
That's language that was actually also in the original annexation agreement, but we, there have been a couple, I think, updated executive orders since the original annexation agreement was done, which is why we put the language back in here. So, yes, I think we have a situation where this project has gone on so long, the developer's engineer has been involved intimately with the project and putting plans together to get cost estimates and, and do the things to make the decisions as to whether this makes sense or not, and so, I think that's the rationale for continuing to use that engineer. We get some economies of scale and they have some expertise already moving forward, which ends up being a cost savings. The contract with the engineer will be reviewed and approved by the LTU, so the city will have opportunity to look at that, and they'll obviously be reviewing and approving the design.
Thank you very much, and I can appreciate efficiencies, cost efficiencies, but, and, and project efficiencies, but I just wanted to double-check that we were going to get the streets that we would want to have at the end of the game. Thank you.
Terrific. Danae, just a, one last thought on, on this. Is there, you, you are expecting us to vote on this item today, is that correct?
If you'd like to vote on this today, I'm also not opposed to holding this over and, and voting on the May 4th meeting when everybody's back together and you have full council members here. So, that's, that's up to you. I'm, I'm not opposed to either. We don't have a huge timeframe for starting work on this, as design really won't probably start until 2021, so we'd have the time, if it'd be your preference to wait. Otherwise, we'd be prepared to have you vote today also, so.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to testify on this item? Seeing, we, no one? Come forward, we can.
There's no one here to testify. We're, nobody else is here to testify on this item.
Okay, thank you very much for advising us. I guess we can go on to the voting session.
All right, we can vote on these items, then. Item 4A was introduced by Show. Item four A was introduced by Show.
If someone would move that.
Go move.
Second.
Moved by James and, I'm sorry, moved by Bowers and seconded by Ward. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to note that at the start of the applicant's presentation, he did ask that we defer for two weeks awaiting all party signatures, that he said he did not have the signature of everyone to the agreement.
Okay, and so I guess, are you making a motion to defer?
I am moving that we delay this at the applicant's request for two weeks.
Do you want action or action and public hearing?
I believe we've had the public hearing, we just need the action.
Just for action, very.
Okay, so is there a second to that motion?
All second.
Seconded by Bowers, introduced by Washington, seconded by Bowers, requesting a two-week delay with action only, which would mean we would take action on May 4th.
Correct.
Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Okay, board?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero. Next then is item four B, the amendment number four to the Waterford Estates Conditional Annexation and Zoning Agreement. This was introduced by Show. So if someone wished to move it, thank you, James.
Moved by Bowers and seconded by?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ward. Any discussion on this item? Okay, please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Motion carried four to zero. Next then, our public hearing, ordinance's second reading. Item five A is an ordinance adopting the supplements to the Lincoln Municipal Code dated June 2019 and December 2019 as part of the official Lincoln Municipal Code.
Is there anyone that would like to testify on this audience, or testify on this item in the chamber? If you could come forward. I don't see anyone. Okay, well, let's go on to the next item.
Next then is item five B, text amendment two zero 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 one, application of Jonathan Henning and Catherine Duncan to amend Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 27.72.120, entitled Height and Lot Regulations for Accessory Buildings, to remove the condition that accessory buildings with a conditioned area shall be no taller than the main building on the same lot.
Good afternoon. Kent Seacrest representing Dr. Jonathan Henning and Paige Duncan. Today, in front of you is what I would call a technical cleanup text amendment dealing with accessory buildings. The Hennings and Dunkins want to construct a barn that will have a conditional area, which is defined as heating and air conditioning. That's still an accessory building, that it will be taller than their two-story, flat roof, 25-foot-high house. There are several types of accessory dwelling, of buildings, but this is not one that you recently did about two years ago about accessory dwellings. This is not an accessory dwelling that would allow what you and I call a granny flat or a secondary dwelling on a property. This has to do with the other accessory dwelling, accessory buildings that are allowed by the Lincoln Municipal Code. There's two other types. Unconditional use accessory buildings are without heat and air conditioning, and conditional use accessory buildings allow heat and/or air conditioning. What is in front of you today is right now, the unconditional, meaning the non-heated or air-conditioned accessory building that's not a dwelling, is allowed to be taller than the main residence as long as it's within the setback area and does not exceed the zoning heights. However, a conditional or a heated or, heated or an air-conditioned accessory building cannot exceed the dwelling height of the main building. And this amendment in front of you would allow it to do and be treated the same as an unconditional accessory building. So if I haven't glossed over your eyes on that one yet, staff believes that this ordinance was, is amendment is, will catch up and make the two types of accessory buildings that are not accessory dwellings be consistent, and it will allow the project to go forward for their barn and be taller than their 25-foot, two-story, flat roof house. With that, staff has recommended approval of this technical amendment, and Planning Commission voted seven zero to recommend it to you for approval. There was no opposition that attended the Planning Commission hearing, and I just want to thank Rachel Jones and Steve Hendrickson for their help in preparing this text amendment. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Seacrest? I don't see anyone raising their hand. Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to offer comment on this item? Okay, thank you, Mr. Seacrest. I think we can just move on to the next items.
Okay, we'll go on to item five C and D. They are text amendment two zero zero two, application of Dave and Jolene Queen to amend Chapter 27.02, entitled Definitions, by amending the definition of campgrounds in Section 27.02.040, C, campgrounds to include additional descriptive terms by amending the definition of recreational vehicle in Section 27.02.190R, recreational vehicle, to remove length, width, and height restrictions, and by amending Section 27.63.270, campgrounds to alter the conditions required for campgrounds as a special permitted use. Item five D is addendum number one to the amended lease between the city and Queensland, Inc., operators of Camp Away Campground, to extend the term of the lease at a termination for convenience provision, reset the annual rental, rental rate, and update other lease provisions.
Okay, I think, is, oh, Mr. Seacrest, yes, I see you're there.
Giddy afternoon. My name's Kent Seacrest, representing Dave, Jolene, and Chris Queen, who are the current operators of Lincoln's private campground, Camp Away, located up on I-80, I-180, and Superior Street here in Lincoln. We have two matters in front of you. The existing lease that the, that Camp Away has is set to expire in 2025, so the second item would extend that lease for up to 1.5 to, up, between 1.5 to five years, and has additional terms that we can go over here in a moment. The first item has to do with just the special permit process, amending the special permit conditions to grant a campground under the Lincoln Municipal Code. The Queens, because they're basically told that their days are numbered at Camp Away up on I-180, 80, needs to start looking for another site, and we wanted to bring up to date and update the current special permit conditions for campgrounds. I just would start by saying camping is a big, big business and a big pastime and recreational activity for, for, in 2018, over 41 million people participated in camping or clamping, as some people are starting to have that opportunity. So we're trying to bring up the code to the current market conditions and also technology. I'm putting up on the screen the new techniques that we're seeing in camping that this amendment would allow. If it shows, clamping or glamorous camping is the first image, if it shows here. And you can see it's more traditionally taking the camp, camp into a new high amenity setting. Also, some campgrounds are using teepees. Yurts are becoming popular in some places. And this bottom picture is showing you a Park Model RV, which is, cannot exceed 400 square feet, but allows kitchen or bathrooms, but it's also on wheels and stays on wheels, so it's not a mobile home or a manufactured house under the code. What we're talking about is allowing campgrounds by special permit, so you still need to go through a special permit process. We're not here today with a specific property, but just to set the framework for the special permit conditions. The conditions would require 40 campsites. The roads to the campground would have to be paved, and no camper could occupy, be occupied by the same person for more than 31 days in any one calendar year unless they have what I call are staying at a campground with high amenities like swimming pools, convenient shopping. Then, under those situations, 35% of the campsites may be occupied by the same person for up to 180 days in any 365-day period. What we're really doing with the second part is making it clear that there's what you would call overnight guests, which we call up to one month in duration, and then seasonal guests, which are over one month in duration. Seasonal guests, the Queens are here, they will give you some examples of what the seasonal guest requests entail, what their conditions are. Lancaster Event Center allows seasonal guests. They have a football package that allows you to stay for three months, and you can then ask permission from the executive director of Lancaster Event Center to stay even longer. So we allow our public campgrounds to extend for over 31 days at, at a time we're asking for similar. And if you take motels or hotels, there's no rules with them that they must stay and allow their occupants not to exceed 31 days. In fact, given the circumstances today, there are guests that are definitely needing the 31-day extension or more. I went up and down and checked the other campgrounds, up and down the I-180 corridor and nearby, and they do allow not only the overnight 31-day guests, but also the seasonal guests. And these would include Douglas County, Sarpy County, Cass County, Seward County, York County, Hall County, and then Hamilton and Odo also allow this type of seasonal guests. So the operators would need to keep their records straight and be able to be audited by the city to be sure they comply with the 35% limitation. And this text amendment does not address or expand mobile homes or manufacturing homes in any way, shape, or form. We have had letters of support from Lynn Johnson, Director of Parks, about the Queens' operation. Jeff Maul from Lincoln Convention and Visitor Bureau has expressed his support for the need of campgrounds in this community. At last count, I think there was over 28 letters of support for the text amendment. And with that, we had the Planning Commission and the staff also recommend support. Planning Commission recommended it six one, and the one commissioner that voted against it, I think, expressed that we did not go far enough and we were too restrictive in our 40 campsite count and prohibiting alcohol as part of this. I'll do real quick, we have the addendum to amend the current lease of Camp Away up at I-180, 80, and Superior Street. The current lease expires, as I said, in March 2025. This lease would allow the extension for 1.5 years and perhaps up to five years if both parties agree. The rent is being increased, and the rent that the Queens would charge their campers is subject to approval by the Director of Parks and Recreation. And then the campground standards have been brought up to date and required to meet the more current standards. We've also included the more modern and better insurance provisions and audit provisions to protect this public's interest. And this will allow us to keep the campground going up and through the National High School Rodeo Championship. Councilwoman of Washington, I think, today has proposed some new, new changes to the lease, and I got to review Councilwoman's proposed revisions, and you can tell we're dealing with someone who has reviewed similar recreation documents for a living. And so her changes are, are very good and appropriate at this time. I would then like to ask the Queens to come up to add some more text to, or testimony.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, council members. I am Jolene Queen with Camp Away at 200 Campers Circle, which again is at First and Superior. I thank you for your service during these very unique times. Chris, he will speak to the response that we've had regarding the pandemic and the things that we're doing there at the campground. And I must say, we look forward to focusing on returning our park back to a place that families can once again enjoy the reap, enjoy, and reaping the benefits of being outdoors. The purpose of this text amendment is twofold. First, it will apply to our special permit that we are updating with the city, which is also before you today. And secondly, it forms the framework for any new special permit we would apply for in the future for building a replacement campground. The 2019 Association of RV Parks and Campgrounds survey shows that seasonal guests are a normal practice in the camping industry. Florida, Texas, Arizona, California, Pennsylvania, Ohio, and Wisconsin all have a multitude of campgrounds that cater 100% of seasonals. It's a major economic driver for those states. There are at least three such campgrounds located in Cass County just to the east of Lincoln. There's Lenoma Beach, Morehead Island, and Lindsay Lakes, or Lindy Lakes, I'm sorry. Some of the reasons for extending the length of stay are given in the notes for the text amendment. We have traveling nurses, grandparents visiting for the summer, family members whose loved ones are in the hospital or rehab. We've got people that are trying to fill the gap between the sale of closing on a house and purchasing a new home, and that's just a few of the reasons for people needing to stay on a little longer timeframe than the one-month timeframe. We also want to have the flexibility to ensure that we can meet the financial obligations to our bank if we develop a new park, and especially at the beginning of the park's life cycle. We believe that we have a major impact on Lincoln's tourism economy. These are not local dollars. The majority of our revenue is from outside of the area. We have an economic impact in the millions. Using the smallest dollar multiplier from the Lincoln City Visitors Bureau, we have an impact of $3.3 million from May to October. This does not factor in someone buying a big-ticket item such as a new camper from Bisher Leach or a new truck to pull it with, which actually happens quite often. During these same six months, we pay out about $158,000 in wages, a quarter of a million for the year. We look forward to continuing to be the best ambassadors that we can for the city of Lincoln, and we believe that Lincoln can be a key market for the RV industry in the Midwest. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down to testify. Are there any questions for Ms. Queen? I don't see anybody's hands go up. Thank you again for coming down to testify. We do appreciate that. And now, I understand your husband is going to come up and testify as well?
Coming up.
Your son, Chris, okay, terrific.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Chris Queen at 200 Campers Circle from Camp Away Campground. Thank you for holding this meeting. It's kind of weird trying to see where I'm supposed to look. Basically, privately-owned campgrounds are jacks of all trades. They operate in a unique position that bridges three distinct industries, travel and tourism, short-term residency, and parks and wildlife, and they've been declared essential businesses by counties and states across the U.S., including hotspots like New York, Washington, and California. In March, the state of California bought 1,300 RVs to provide emergency isolation for vulnerable citizens. Until the end of February, Camp Away played host to frontline medical professionals who, under the current municipal codes written in the 1960s, were not able to stay any longer. These nurses had to leave Lincoln for positions in other communities. We've had calls in hopes of other people coming, but the 30-day limit means they can't fulfill their standard 13-week contract. Besides their professional expertise, we want to have their lodging, gas, food, entertainment dollars here at home, rather than sending them and all that they bring to another city or county. We like to focus on having fun and providing plenty of family entertainment and family-friendly activities. and providing plenty of family entertainment and family-friendly activities. But privately-owned parks like Camp Away can quickly evolve to accommodate emergency situations. Like many businesses, we've been able to enact safeguards for our guests and staff while still providing essential services. Responding to situations isn't new. We've personally housed those affected by the Howlin' tornado, the Missouri River floods, plus little house fires and things that don't make the nightly news. Right now, privately, private campgrounds are filling in gaps that state-funded properties are leaving exposed. We're currently hosting the state park personnel, who've been displaced by the state park shutdowns. Contractors from municipalities and utilities are still forging ahead with the wind farm, the pipeline, and the South Beltway projects, and even as the other entities are pulling shutters. Essential tradespeople are continuing to use their RVs as their home and office as they provide service to communities. What, what a better place to host visitors than the wide-open spaces of a campground? RVers bring their own sleeping quarters and maintain their distances and recharge in the fresh air and sunlight rather than risking the close quarters of an airline. And finally, when life transitions to the new normal, private campgrounds will rapidly transform back to family travel stops, tourism destinations, regional base camps, and a home away from home. Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Queen. Are there any questions for Mr. Queen? Okay, Sandra.
Good afternoon, and thank you for coming down to the meeting. I really don't have a question for you, but I really wanted to extend my thanks. I know that spending time in the outdoors is beneficial to all of us. And having temporary quarters for seasonal work is also quite a critical need here. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much. Are there any, any other questions?
I have a question for staff. I'm, I can, I see that Lynn is present, Lynn Johnson from the Parks Department, and I think that David Carey is still in the Luxford studio. So I will, I will direct my questions toward them. Really, I have one specific question. This has to do with zoning and the rationale for changing the setback for this use condition of campground. In the AG and AGR zones, the setbacks are 50 or 60 feet, front and side. But usually, it's 100-foot setback at the rear. And I'm curious why a campground would be less than 100-foot setback at the rear in the AG or AGR?
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. I can address that question. Part of what we were looking at is that in some of the properties that had been discussed as potential sites for campgrounds when we were talking with the Queens, some of the sites were corner lots. And so on a corner lot, you would have one side, one, you'd have two front yards, and then the other opposite sides, one would be technically a side yard and one would be a rear yard. And it got to be rather difficult to explain, well, why would one property owner have a greater setback of a rear yard and the other one have a lesser setback? So that's why we thought it made sense to have a more uniform, established setback. But because it is a special permit, if, for instance, to the east, you actually had an acreage subdivision or you had an urban neighborhood, because this could be next to the city or inside the city, through the special permit, you could then establish a much greater setback. So we were comfortable that this would be a, might be viewed as a lesser setback. But particularly when you're looking that it might be adjacent farm property, even the setback as shown might be a little bit large for that. So because you have that special permit that could adjust the setbacks, we were comfortable with changing it so that both the side and the rear would be the same.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Hendrickson, staff? I know we have Lynn Johnson waiting in the wings. Sandra, did you have questions for Lynn?
I did have a question, and it really, it was a clarification because either in the summary report and in the text amendment, they were written slightly differently. And I just wanted to make certain that the days counted for someone staying at the campground were cumulative over the year, not just consecutive. So if they stayed for 0 to 31 days, we're talking about a cumulative count over the length of the year and the counter, I mean, the operators who keeps the count. And if it were a long-term stay, that's a consecutive stay? Or are we also talking about a cumulative stay of up to 180 days?
Lynn, we need you to unmute yourself.
There we go. I apologize. Yeah, Lynn Johnson, Director of Lincoln Parks and Recreation. My understanding is that the 180 days would be 180 consecutive days within a 365-day period.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for staff? Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to testify on these two items, 5C or 5D?
There is no one further here to testify.
Okay, great. Well, thanks, thanks to the Queens for coming down to testify. And staff, I think we can move on.
I'll call 5E and F together. They're Annexation 20005, application of NEBCO, Inc., to annex approximately 34.89 acres of property generally located at Northwest 12th Street and Astor Road. And change of Zone 05085C, application of NEBCO, Inc., for a change from AG Agriculture to R3 Residential Planned Unit Development on property generally located at Northwest 12th Street and Astor Road.
My name is Tim Gergen with the Clark Anderson Partners, here representing NEBCO, Inc. This is our next addition of Fallbrook. We have an annexation agreement already set and fulfilled for the entire area of Fallbrook. And this is one of the last remaining parts that is undeveloped at Fallbrook. This is the area that is north of Astor and east of Northwest 12th Street. This is right behind the SuperSaver Grocery Store. This will add the next addition of a variety of residential lots, single-family residential lots to the Fallbrook subdivision. And be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gergen on this project? Tim, I have a question for you. Tell me a little bit more about 12th Street. What is, what is going to happen to 12th Street as part of this development?
12th Street is one of the projects that was selected by the city of Lincoln for the sales tax project. Right now, 12th Street is built, the one part of it with the roundabout. And I'll ask if we can go back to the screen. There you go. Thank you. So this roundabout here is constructed. This Astor Road is built and connected into the Highlands subdivision. So what's going to be next on the project for Northwest 12th Street is this part. That part will be built with the sales tax dollars that will essentially connect the neighborhood streets that we are planning to connect to Northwest 12th Street will connect down to that built roundabout. And so as the Fallbrook and the neighboring subdivision Highlands view are built as they further go up north, I'm assuming Northwest 12th Street will just continue to be built further north as well till we get to Alvo Road.
And then, could you talk a little bit about Northwest 12th Street on the south side? What is going to happen with that connection?
Connection, we have planned for it. We have right-of-way dedicated for it. We have the roundabout set up so that that can be a bridge over Highway 34. But at this point, that is not in any CIP projects or any funding for that. However, the Fallbrook development would welcome that connection, and we are supporting that, providing the necessary right-of-way and the connection points for that.
And then, the traffic counts in that community? It sounds like, can you show us how they're gonna, what would be the typical route to try to get to Highway 34 with this new development?
Well, this new development would take this route. They would either exit out to Tallgrass Boulevard, come through the roundabout, and exit at this turn lane or this traffic signal, or come down to Astor Road, come down.
Tim, we're losing your audio. When you step kind of away from the mic, could you move the mic with you, if you could, please?
There we go. So the development would either exit out to Tallgrass Boulevard and come down Boulevard, and then come out to Fallbrook at the traffic signal on Highway 34, or come out to Astor Road. You come down to Merchant Road or come down to Tallgrass and go through there to Highway 34.
Yeah, tell me. Did you have a question?
Did. Thanks, Madam Chair. So, Tim, I was just skimming the report. These are 100 single, new single-family residential dwellings. Is there a timeframe for what you see in terms of, it's hard to finish, or an estimate?
NEBCO is committing to build this all in one phase, and we are designing the infrastructure as we speak. We are really pushing to have this infrastructure built and platted by the end of this year.
Thank you.
You bet.
And then, Tim, could you talk a little bit about, has a traffic study been done to, I guess, assess the increase in traffic and the impact?
Traffic study has not been done. We typically do not do traffic studies for residential development, mainly just commercial developments. It falls in line with the overall traffic study that has been on record for the Fallbrook development.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there any other questions for Mr. Gergen? Seeing no hands raised, thank you very much. Is, Tim, is there anyone else that would like to testify on these two items in the chamber? There is not. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Thank you, and I think we can go on.
All right, that concludes our public hearing. Our pending list are Items 6A through G. I would entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Moved and looks like seconded by, moved by Ward and seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Rabel?
Yes.
Motion carried, 4 to 0.
Thank you very much for my colleagues. We've made a little bit of history here with our first video conferencing of city council. So thank you all for your patience. Thank you all out there for listening to us. Please stay well, stay safe. And of course, let's do everything we can, big or small, to protect one another, and we all stay healthy. So we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time and attention.
Thank you.